Order at six thirty two. Roll call, Peg. Nice. Microphone.
I mean not my digital.
Yeah, but these don't work half the time, so maybe you better put a...
Councilman Parmley.
Present.
Councilwoman Yor.
Present.
Councilman Musa.
New shirt.
Shirt. I'm sorry. I don't know what it is. And Councilman McCormick.
Present.
Council Vice President D'Agostino.
Present.
And Council President Grandy. I mean Conlins.
I don't have glasses on. Peg, I don't have glasses on. Okay, thank you. Item four, possible motion to convene and to close the executive session. Motion to close executive session, motion to seal the minutes. Announcement of votes in executive session, if any. A, town council may to convene into executive session to discuss, take possible action, and or vote pursuant to the relevant requirements of Rhode Island general laws forty two, forty six, five A. Subsection one, the discussion of the job performance, character, or physical or mental health of an employee, provided that such person affected shall have been notified in advance, in writing, and advise that the employee may require that the discussion be held at an open meeting. Discussion then or potential action, announcement and or vote from executive session and or open session concerning the affected employee.
So moved.
Right.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Okay, we're...
We're happy to give our, you know, our opinions and we did in a letter to Peggy, which I hope she'll thought, you know, pass along to you, but that's, that's it. I was over my two minutes.
Okay.
Hi Cindy, Jan Francisco, 299 Lena Chapel Road. I'm also the Chair of the Conservation Commission. On a September 24th, we were awarded the accreditation through the round police chief, uh, police chiefs, Ryan Police Chief, Ryan Police Accreditation Commission. It was about a year, a little over a year, year and a half of a lot of hard work by everyone in the PD. Deputy Chief was the lead on this and I can't credit him enough for everything he did with this rewriting policies dating back to the early seventies. And reemphasizing what he's putting out through policies and rules and regs through the whole department from dispatchers to patrols to our clerical people, our non-union civilian people. So everyone had a piece in this. It's, it's an honor to get this. We're going to maintain this. We're up for re-accreditation three years, but we're already working towards that because we need to maintain what we have. And I can't say enough about every one of the PD that's bought into this and they're really taking on this and following what we're doing. And it's just a great job. Again, deputy working with retired chief Rick Stainsevauer from Smithfield, a lot of work, a lot of hours, and they did a great job. I appreciate everything they did and everything every one of the PD has done for this.
Thank you, Chief.
Good job.
Richard Finningham, Rich Road. After listening to the chief, it seems like this was a lot of work that had to take place. What, what is the benefit to the town? Is there a financial benefit for this? Cause it's so much work?
It's, it's a, I don't know the numbers, but the trust is supportive of our accreditation and I believe it's they reduce our.
Your claims or something. I mean, it's, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Again, I didn't know the numbers, but I know it did reduce the deductible. So that's, that's a big number.
Rob Bauer, 21 Sutton Sun Drive. I'm Chair of the Land Trust and I sit on the Conservation Commission. I just wanted to thank the town clerk for sharing communication to the governor's office that went around to other folks as well. Asking our opinion on what the most important infrastructure problems were in the town of Situate. So Cindy and I were glad to respond on behalf of the land trust and the conservation commission. And in our view, the most important ones center around the Upper Patuxent River. We feel the most important infrastructure problems in Situate. Number one would be the septic situation on the Upper Patuxent River, whether or not sewers would be feasible and so forth. That's number one. Number two, Hope Mill, obviously serious challenges there and we don't have a lot of control over as much control as we'd like to address that, but that's a huge infrastructure issue for the town of Situate. And we feel the third most important one is the Hope Dam there above the mill, which is so crucial to the recreational benefits we enjoy there at the Hope Pond. So we appreciate being asked. We noticed in the communication that it asked for one response from the town. We didn't feel comfortable clicking on the link. So I wasn't clear whether you really wanted us to respond directly to the governor's office or not. You can share with me after the meeting if that's the case, but I just think this is the kind of thing that the town ought to be aware of and be able to respond promptly to, to the governor's office when there's requests like that. I'm not blaming anybody. I think it's a problem with the structure of our local government. And I really think we need to look seriously at how we're structured so we can respond nimbly and quickly and promptly to requests like that. And that may be just be a general survey, but if we go out later for big money from the, ask for big money from the state, it really doesn't look good if we didn't respond promptly to that kind of request. So I would just ask you, I guess, let's talk about how we can address that. Should you appoint a, you know, another commission to look at the town charter, another committee to get that going again? Should you go ahead and talk about what kind of permanent staff in the way of a town manager or whether we need to look at more permanent staff in other areas? I just think, I know whenever we talk about spending money like that, we're concerned, but I think if we look back and look at how we haven't addressed long-term issues and haven't responded promptly to these kinds of things and really planning out where we want to be, we're losing money in the long run. And I think the taxpayers will support us, you, and organizing in a way that we can make more efficient use of the taxpayers' money instead of kicking the can down the road and figuring out what we're going to do. And we're just not structured in a way to wait for council meetings and hash it over and decide we need to have a coordinator, full-time staff member that can be a point person that we can go to. I think other committees and volunteer organizations will second me and the difficulty sometimes of getting straight answer. Not blaming anybody, but it's just the way we're organized. It's very difficult.
Rob, how do these requests come in? Cause I don't recall seeing anything like this in my town email. So I'm, I'm wondering who, who is it addressed to when it comes in?
I had, I had received it and I sent it out to all of, I believe I sent it to the council also, but all of the different departments and organizations. And it was a very simple request. Just give us, you know, some of your ideas. Heard back from Rob and Cindy and from Cheryl Ignacio. Give me a back from any of the other, how do I say it? Other people in the, the mix. And then when I submitted it, they sent me back, well, you need cost estimates. You need this and it needs to be in immediately. And it's like, well, you didn't say that in the beginning. They gave us like a two week headway. And so, I mean, there's a lot of things that are not conducive, but the thing is, is that, I mean, there is no way that we had enough time. If we had known originally that all of those boxes had to be checked, they just, it was a very basic email from the governor's office saying, what are your, but didn't say you have to give any substantiation.
No, it did, it did ask for one response from the town.
Right. And that's why I sent what you had suggested and Cindy and Cheryl. I said, I mean, I sent that to them and then all of a sudden it's like, well, no, now it's going to be matching grants and are you willing to put in? But there was no time to, to jump on anything like this. There would have to be somebody that is much more versed than I am.
But yeah, that's why I say we're not organized in a way to promptly respond. It should have come to the council and you should have hashed it over and said, yeah, this is what we need. We need to get back to governor's office. It may not be too late if you want to make a communication to them, but I just think we ought to respond in some way.
But now they want.
But you didn't fill out the link that, that they provided, right?
No, I sent it right to the governor, what we wanted. And they sent back to me, well, and I think I've sent it to you. We need cost estimates. We need this. We need.
All you sent to me was another response from them with a link in there. And I just thought it was the same link as the earlier one. When I started to click, click on it, there was a survey response. And we talked it over and Cindy and I just didn't feel comfortable, you know, because we're not representing the town. We're happy to give our, you know, our opinions and we did in a letter to Peggy, which I hope she'll thought, you know, pass along to you, but that's, that's it. I was, I'm over my two minutes.
Okay.
Hi Cindy, Jan Francesco, 299 Lena Chapel Road. I'm also the Chair of the Conservation Commission. On a similar note, I was forwarded an email a few weeks ago from the, the town grant writer with information about a grant opportunity. And when I looked into it, it's through the New England Water Infrastructure Network and they're, they have funding available to provide technical assistance for things like drinking water, wastewater, storm water, non-point source pollution issues. And when I, again, it was a quick fill in the blank type application. And when I looked at it, I thought, again, this needs to come from somebody higher up than the Conservation Commission Chair. This is the type of thing that comes from a town planner or a town manager. But more likely a town planner that knows what the issues are and, you know, what needs to be addressed first, what the priorities are after, you know, multiple discussions with the council. I mean, I didn't feel comfortable submitting this application. I'll be glad to do it, but if they come to us and say, okay, we're, we're ready to provide you with technical assistance. Again, as a Conservation Commission Chair, I don't think I'm in the position to oversee that kind of project. That should come from somebody that's a town staff person really. And on that note, what I did was I started, I just looked into other towns to see how many other towns have a town planner. Us and Little Compton are the only towns in Rhode Island that do not have a town planner. Most other towns not only have a planner, but have a planning department with multiple staff. And I mean, I don't know if you can compare us to Little Compton. They only have 3,500 full-time people living in town. So much smaller than us. So, you know, I think that this is an opportunity to get, again, get some funding for the town, but I need more direction. I mean, should a separate committee be set up to respond to these kinds of things with input from the council? And a lot of times the, there's a timeframe on them that we need to get back to them in a certain amount of time and we don't have time to wait for the next council meeting. So I, you know, I don't know how to proceed and if, and if I should be the right person to proceed.
Ashley Sweet, she's our town planner. But she's part-time.
She's part-time and she's also a contract planner. So, you know, again, do you want to pay a contract planner to oversee this type of grant? And she needs to be tasked with working with me if that's what you want to do. Cause I can't just call her and, and, and ask her to, to do something with this.
I mean, I think the answer is yeah, we want her to be available to do those types of things, but you're right. You've got to go through someone on the council to, to make that happen. Be it the council president or the liaison, I would think.
And who is the liaison?
I think it's me.
Yeah, it is.
Okay. Good to know.
I'll, I'll make sure you have my cell phone.
Okay. And just to let you know, the, the, the grant writer had sent this information to John Robinson and John Robinson replied to her to send the information to me that I would be very interested in it, which he was right, I am. But again, you know, so should we task or can someone tell the town grant writer to contact the town planner and work with them on this? But I mean,
We can, we can do that.
Okay. All right. All right. We'll follow up on it. The other thing I just wanted to mention, and Chuck, you mentioned this to me before the meeting. The onsite wastewater management plan, we, we mentioned it at the last meeting. Apparently the funding to, to update that plan had been approved by the council back in January. I don't know when it was assigned to Joe Casali. I talked to him yesterday. He said that a purchase order was issued and that he would start working on it. I would like to work with him on that since I was involved in, in submitting the original one. So if, if we can relay that information to him, I would appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thomas Gallagher, Pine Hill Road. I wish John Robinson was here tonight because as we spoke at the last meeting, did I understand the proposal for new fire station is only one and not one in Hope?
As far as I know, they're working on two, one for Hope and one for North Situate.
Yeah. Cause he talked about the property in North Situate.
They're negotiating for two properties. Right here, Tom. So, so, so they're negotiating for two properties in anticipation of down the road of, you know.
Your old police station. Who owns it?
Hope, Hope does. Hope.
Situate doesn't own?
No.
Hope Fire, why couldn't they move it across the road there? Now we would, you told me we're not giving, you, you told me we're not giving up any property in Situate, but property.
So that building across the street from the Hope Fire Station, which is the old police station, I believe that's the Emergency Management Agency Office where Chief Robinson has his office. They also do a number of trainings in there. And it's on a hill. It's totally inappropriate for a new modern type fire station with the size of the trucks that we have and things like that. It just wouldn't fit in there.
And it's in a floodplain too. So I'm not, how much money are you going to put into a floodplain?
And the other thing is too, when the independent men were here, they wanted to tear it down. We found out that it's an historic building, so they couldn't tear it down. So when that happened, they gave it to Hope Jackson Fire Department.
I'm talking about the open property there.
Yeah, but, but the building's there. You couldn't, there's not enough.
There isn't, there's a big parking lot next to it. That is the, that is the Hope Fire Department Administrative Building. That's what it is. That's what it is. Their officers, the fire department, if, they just had the parking lot paved. Is that the, 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 the officers have their offices in there. They have a training room in there for Situate EMA. They use it for a variety of functions. The Hope Legacy Project and Hope Overlake Committee meet in there sometimes. It is a functioning building, and it is just not appropriate in any way, shape or form to try to put a fire department.
And we don't own it.
And the other thing is, I notice in the bills, we're paying a K Land Gene LLC. For Hope Mill Pond, three thousand dollars. Do we own Hope Mill Pond? That's private, isn't it?
Hope Mill Pond?
I mean, the land is private, we lease it, but I don't know.
Talking about off of Wrightfield Drive? That's the water testing, right? Cindy?
I'm sorry.
Is that the water testing? No?
L A V I G N E.
Is it further in the agenda and we can talk about it when we get to it?
It's in the bills, it's in the bills. We'll have to get back, I mean, yeah.
That is a good point.
And then a lot of money in Hope. What's that? Who said that?
I did.
Yeah, where do you live?
Richard Finnegan Ridge Road. Everybody must have received their tax bills by now. Can we get the treasurer to give us a little, um, informational? Setting on, um, how the taxes are set out here in Situate? I went over the square, basic square foot that the council pays on their taxes. Like you, Mr. Chairman, seventy-eight dollars, that was the basic square foot. It was adjusted down to sixty-nine dollars. Mr. McCormick, ninety-seven dollars a square foot for a one point one eight million dollar home. On sixty-five acres, which cost six hundred fifty thousand. If I'm right, if I'm wrong, you can correct me. Um, the discount down to eighty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents. You're getting screwed, Councilman Parmley. You're paying a hundred and forty dollars a square foot. And they upped your taxes to a hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents a square foot. Mr. Grandy, you too, you're getting screwed. A hundred and nineteen dollars a basic square foot. And they upped it to a hundred and thirty-one dollars. So, um, I, I would like to see why some of the council are paying so little per square foot. And then. Others are paying so much. So I'd, I'd appreciate if we can get something. Um, so, some meetings so the ta- taxpayers know what they're paying a square foot and why they're paying. So much more. Myself, I'll tell you myself, my basic square footage is a hundred and seventeen dollars. And it was up to a hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty cents, fifteen dollars over. So, I'm in the same boat, pounding uphill with you guys. Um, so I, I like the informational setting. Um, to, to let us know, I think, with, with taxpayers, and we really, really should know. And let me go on to the City of Providence Water Supply Board. Their, their, their tax treaty is coming up very shortly. And, um, we, we're still giving them a twelve and a half percent reduction on their taxes. And you can go to the PUC and look at their filings and look at them brag about that twelve and a half percent, just that twelve and a half percent. Not, not any mistake that, that, that was made, but the twelve and a half percent reduction has cost this town. Since two thousand and one, twenty-eight million dollars. That's what we lost. And since that time, all the property they acquired, the millions of dollars in property that they acquired. Were taken off the tax roll and they paid the same amount. They only go with four percent or whatever we go up, that's it. Cause it's been the same agreement since nineteen ninety. But prior agreements, any property that they bought, they were taxed on. Just like Los, the Foster, Johnston, they tax them on any property they acquire. So I, I, I would ask the council to please look at this. The, 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 the contracts coming up, I think you need to meet. It seems like sometimes the council's unaware, just like we saw, the council's unaware what's going on here in Situate. You have three years to get your act together, to work on this. And to work on a very good agreement for the taxpayers, because that burden is going on the residents. And they're being taxed enough, maybe not members of the council, but the rest of the residents are. So, and I would like to know why, from, from the treasurer, the tax assessor, why so little? Per square foot, for, 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 for these houses, especially Mr. McCormick. One point one eight million dollar home? And he's only being taxed at eighty-three dollars a square foot. It must be a hell of a big home. Wow. The total tax, and you people at home, go look at your taxes, the total tax on that home is thirteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. Eighty-four cents. I'm appalled. I'm appalled that we, the taxpayers, have the burden on us. And some of the members of the council aren't paying their fair share. Thank you for listening.
Hey, Richard, anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to, uh, item ten, consent items, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second. We have any discussion on the consent items? No discussion, on favor?
Aye.
Aye, any against? Item eleven, appointments, there is none. Twelve resolutions, there's none. Thirteen, town business, review, discussion and/or potential action and/or vote. A, consideration of a temporarily waiving the, the vacation carryover policy outlined in the Town's Human Resource Policy. Manual to allow Lisa Benson, the tax collector, to receive a payout for vacation time she is able to use or carry over until. In the next calendar year.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second, we have discussion on it?
Yes, I'm like, how much are we talking about? What are we talking about?
I believe it's two weeks.
And has this ever been done before? For any other employee?
No.
I believe her predecessor lost time. In the years past because she couldn't use it. I actually received phone calls from other employees saying that's never happened before. And, um.
But this happened because, uh, numerous things that were out of her control. She was, um, being a tax collector, they were having computer problems. She was working till eight o'clock at night, I stand on that. Um, the, uh, her predecessor, Pat Russo, was taking care of her sick mother, so she wasn't available some. Beth was a new hire, she was, uh, helping her out, she just couldn't take the time. We can just tell her she's gotta take the time right now, and then Beth's gonna be in there by herself.
Well, we also have a floater that we just hired, so.
She hasn't even, but she hasn't even been trained for it yet.
Uh, if I understand you correctly, Mr. President. That this request stems from her dedication to the town.
Yes.
Basically for making sure that things get done in, in her capacity.
It was brought to me, it was out of her control. I don't feel it's setting precedent. I mean, if somebody else has the same thing, like a, a town. One of Peg's girls, a ladies or something, comes forward, has a problem like that, they can't use it, they can't use it, I mean. That's my opinion, but.
Peter, I, I mean, I, 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 I know we have a lot of dedicated town employees that put their, their personal lives, but, you know. Beside and, and work for the town and give that time. It's, it's just something that has never been done before.
Okay, any other discussion on it?
Yes. I always worry about these issues, setting up precedent. Cause there's always gonna be a good reason why someone should, we should change the rule in that person's opinion. And it's always been my, my, my stance on this from day I took, my first seat in this council, that it's a slippery slope.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Richard Finnegan, I think she's a dedicated employee. I think she should receive that compensation since. She had to be here for the town. We, we, we can't look the other way when our employees are doing town business and trying to bring in taxpayers' money. Tax money for this town. We can't look the other way. We need to do everything possible. And if you, if you, and this is another reason. Here, here's an issue. And you didn't address it, cause you, you, you have this personnel manual that you still haven't finished. It's been three, maybe four years now that, that we're looking at it. Let's get it done. And let's put in there, if there's extenuating circumstances, that the council can make these decisions. But we need to get this manual done, so we don't have to be here before the council. Coming up with these. Issues. Again, I believe she, she should get it. I believe that's the way the council should, cause she's a dead, absolutely dedicated worker. But please, let's get this done. Let's get this man done. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If I were your discussion, I have a real call that peg.
Councilman McCormick?
Aye.
Councilman, you sir.
Aye.
Councilwoman, you're, nay. Councilman Parmley?
Aye.
Councilman Grandy?
Nay.
Council Vice President Dastina?
Aye.
And Council President Collins.
Aye. We'll move on to the request from the Sustainability Committee. To expend funds annually not to exceed a total of five hundred dollars for a committee website. Cost not to exceed two twenty-five was approved at the September eleventh, twenty twenty-five council meeting. Wants to be expended from the due to slash from recycling initiative account.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second, we have a discussion on it? Or barring the discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Aye, any against? Passes. Item C, request from the Sustainability Committee to expend a thousand eighty dollars. From the due to from recycling initiative account for composting at the Situate Art Festival.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made second, we have a discussion on that? Barring the discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Any against? Passes. Item D, motion to table?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, at all favor?
Aye.
Any against? That passes. Item E, authorization from the town council for the art festival committee to use the town grounds at and around the congressional church. For the fifty-ninth Situate Art Festival to be held October ten through twelve, twenty twenty-five. So.
Second.
Motion made second, any discussion? Barring the discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Aye, any against? Passed. Item F, authorization from the town council for the Situate Business Association to use the town grounds. At and around the North Situate gazebo area. And to sell food from the rotary food truck for the family fall festival on Saturday, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second, do we have a discussion on that? Barring the discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Aye, it passes. Um, item G, authorization to complete renovations of the former. Playville School Post Office to be used as a permanent office for the Conservation Commission and Land Trust.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second, we have a discussion on that?
Yeah, um, yeah, I, I have a couple of questions about that.
Go ahead, Terry.
Go ahead. Um, so I, I know I got back to Cindy about there's, um. Uh, asbestos remediation that needs to be done there. Um, I, I love the idea, I really do, but I do. I, I, I'd like it turned into, or to remain type of a meeting house that, that meetings could be held there. You know, that's my only thing, and I don't want it, I mean, we, we did the outside, so it was too. You know, period or kind of sort of. And so we, I'd like to kind of see it. I don't want the outhouses inside destroyed. I'd like them, they are preserved. It's just, it's an old building, it's a, it's a treasured building, and I wanna maintain it that way, for sure.
Um, we have no problem with sharing the building, we just want someplace to have some permanent space. Um, so, yeah, I mean, however, it's determined that the building be set up, whatever, as long as we have some permanent space there. Then we'd be very happy with, with that. Um.
I mean, my question is around the, the concept of complete renovations. I don't know where the funding comes from, I don't know what the dollar amounts associated with this is, how broad this, I.
And that's the information that we're trying to get, that, that I don't think anybody has. So, no one really does have the, the. Where it stopped was the asbestos. And so we do have a quote from Vinagro, from what I understand, from Peter Sparling, who is the chair. Um, and Karen has that. Do you, did you obtain that from Karen?
No, we weren't able to get it.
Okay. Yeah, she, yeah.
The staff was looking.
So that's, that's where it, that's where it stopped.
I mean, it's, it's one thing to, to do this in a way that accommodates your needs as opposed to completing the renovations, which is a much broader. Discussion point, I think. Um. I mean, cause I, I for one, and I, until they come up with a parking solution down there, I don't want to see this developed into someplace for. Broader meetings, cause there's no room to park. Um, whereas if this is done for conservation, you know, Conservation Land Trust meetings, it's limited parking demand. Um. So it's kind of a, is it? Somewhat of completion of the renovations or a full completion renovations? I mean, that's one vote on the council, so. I mean, I was all in favor of renovating the buildings to the point where it's protected from the weather. You want it to be weather tight and not have, and Kirk did that, but.
So at, at this point, it's weather tough.
Yeah.
Inside needs a lot of work, you're right. There's three spots of asbestos, they are small. Even two things you can do, like I've said before, we can abate it, or you can encapsulate it. Sheet rock, oak wood, you know, um. This was just, I see it on the agenda. Nobody has spoken to me about it. I probably could have got a couple of numbers together and got somebody up there. This is what we're talking. It's a great job for the DPW to do during the winter. It's snowing, we can't work on it. It's not snowing, send three guys up there, we can sheet rock. We might have to have somebody that's, uh, asbestos approved to oversee the job if we're gonna go forward with. Sheet rocking over it, you know, uh, what that person does is make sure everybody that's in the area has their mask on, glasses on, that kind of stuff. And their, uh, asbestos approved as same as lead bait.
Right. What about the floor, though? The floor is a, it's kind of an.
Whether that's asbestos on the floor, I don't know.
It's suspect.
You know?
Don't you think it's suspect?
I, I hate to say yes and find out it's not.
Terry, what's the floor? What is it, what is the floor? Is it a tile floor?
It's a tile floor on the other side of it. When it was put down, that part.
But of course, you can, you can go over that, you can encapsulate that too.
You don't, you take it off, but we can, a floating floor over it is not a problem.
Yeah.
If it's level, you could, if it's level.
Yes, yeah. The, the building itself is in good shape. Now, about three years ago. Uh, after the post office left, you know, we turned the heat down to fifty-five or sixty. We shut the water off, we drained the lines, you know, so there's an extensive amount of work that has to be done. Besides just going in and sheet rock and, you know, and we could turn it into two rooms. Because my office gets a lot of calls from a small group, you couldn't hold a big meeting, but you could have. Uh, to use somebody, Fred Ferry, his sign company, it was always looking for somebody, a spot to meet, you know? It's good for six, eight cars, perfect, you know? Uh, we can make us a divided room for the Land Trust Conservation Commission, still have an area for open meetings. And still be able to get it to the back for the facilities.
I'm, I'm all for it, but I'd like some understanding of where the money's gonna come from and. The estimated cost is going to be.
This would have to come out of next, you know, we could do almost nothing this year. Because we couldn't, the asbestos is still in the building, it's not encapsulated, you know, or removed. So, there's a lot that has to happen before it gets to, yeah, let's move in, you know?
Mr. President, if I may, perhaps a motion to table this while we get some investigation. I, I think we all agree it sounds like a good idea. And a good place for the Conservation Commission and Land Trust and others, but I think we need a little more information.
More information.
I did send some emails out, and so, and, and I know you've worked with Peter Sparling.
Yeah.
You know, and so he has all that information, I think you've worked together on that, so, I mean, that's really the.
Yeah, yeah.
And Peter, Peter's willing to do that.
Peter has bowed out, uh, maybe three or four weeks ago. Uh, said he was bowing out of it, uh, uh. Committee was dissolved.
It is.
It was just. Committee was dissolved. It was just Peter and I.
Right.
And then Peter said, hey, nothing's happening. If you need a hand, I'm happy, but we're just going to dissolve the business.
Right, but he has all the.
He has all the.
Hey, why don't you, why don't you work up some numbers, Kurt? Just go, go through the building and a rain, a couple rainy days and, you know?
And it's a great project for DPW, though. It is certainly something I feel we could handle with no trouble. The B board would be left intact. We, like this room, we could go above it, you know?
It's comparable to the project that you did with the, the, um, um.
Community House, yeah.
Community House. I mean, it's, it's, it's identical.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's an identical project.
And it would be nice to have for small meetings and things like that. Yeah.
Right. We get a lot of calls. Small groups need to meet, Little League, there's only six or eight people need to get together, but they need a space.
So why don't you just go through and work up some numbers and.
All right. Can I have a motion to table?
So, so moved.
Second.
Motion made a second. It's a table list, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against this table?
Just wanted to add, uh, to that, that, um, if you can get it safe to get into, I'm sure there's a lot of volunteer work that can go to reconfiguring the space. There's some wonderful historic stuff and antique kinds of things. So it'll be a beautiful area for citizens to meet in and enjoy.
Exactly. And there's, there's also some memorabilia in there that needs to be cared for. And the Preservation Society, I believe, will care for that while the renovations are going on. But that's something that definitely needs to happen. Okay?
Okay. Item H, request from the Land Trust for $15,950 for engineering services to be provided by the town engineer for preliminary design and construction costs for, uh, trail improvements at the Riley Lane in support of Rhode Island DEM Outdoor Recreation Development Grant due November 18th, 2025. Per the tax estimate provided by Joe Casal.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made a second. Do we have a discussion on that?
I'd like to understand, uh, the, the grant, Outdoor Recreation Development Grant due. What, what is the value of that grant?
Well, we don't really know yet because until Joe Casali puts together a preliminary design and estimates, we don't know how much to ask for. Um, but we're, we're anticipating applying for a small grant, which is up to 125,000 with a 25% match, which we will provide in in-flight services.
Okay, so, so we're not going to be spending $16,000 to get a $10,000 grant?
No, it would be much more than that. No, I'm sure it would be much more than that. And regardless, we still need a preliminary design. Um, so, uh, this way we'll have it. If we don't get this grant, I'm sure other grant opportunities will, will come up. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, barring all the discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? So set. Item I, approval of posting a new RFP for the Hope Village wastewater feasibility study. The town previously went out to bid in June 2024 and received two estimates to conduct the feasibility study in the amounts of $87,167 and $94,500, but did not award.
So can I just mention that last week I had asked Karen if she could get in touch with the companies that responded to that bid and ask them if they would hold their prices? One of them got back to her before she left on vacation and she copied me on that. And that, that was, um, the one for $87,167. From Jeremiah and Associates. I don't know if she heard from the other respondent or not. But this, this was actually something that I thought that grant that I mentioned earlier, we could consider putting in, requesting that type of technical assistance from that organization to actually do this feasibility study. So that might be something that we want to consider.
So my thoughts on this is, first off, you know that I'm in favor of looking into sewers in Hope, okay? But it's a much bigger project than just the feasibility in the town of Situate. We've got to get other towns engaged and on board with that. And I don't know if this is the cart before the horse kind of thing where, you know, we really should be engaging with these other towns to get a sense from them if in fact they'd want to participate in considering a program to get sewers. Because otherwise, I don't know how we do this if we don't get Coventry and West Warwick on board.
Well, so Jeremiah that responded, he, they manage both of, all of those towns. They've done work in all of those towns. They know all the people. So as part of the feasibility study, I think that would be part of it is, I mean, and that's only one option. There's other, there's other options. Not just tying in to West Warwick. Um, so that's what the feasibility study would tell us is what the various options are, how much each one would cost, how difficult it would be to get to that point, what needs to be done in order to move forward with, with each option and what type of funding is available out there. So I think if, if anybody, Jeremiah and Associates is, is
In, in.
The perfect contractor to figure all that out.
And multi-town, uh, you know, projects often, you know, get the eye of the state and every, I mean, it gets a lot more attention.
Yes.
Um, I just don't know where we come up with the funding for this in the near term.
We have a, I have a question, Cindy. Um, and I'm not putting the words back at you. I have, I have, okay. This, this software, this organization, Jeremiah, they're obviously well versed. They work with other towns. Um, can we ask them like an idea of what this is going to cost? Because if it's going to cost $10 million, we're wasting $87,000.
We already have a preliminary quote of sewers from Joe Casali. It's preliminary. It's like 16 to 18 million dollars.
Yeah, we don't have 16, 18.
We don't, but maybe other town, maybe in conjunction with other towns and grant funding, we can do it. Uh, it also involves us, you know, creating a sewer district and assessing a certain amount of, you know, uh, you know, financial burden on the, the homes in the sewer district if they choose to do it. It's a pretty complicated thing to do. There's a lot of different pockets of money that come into play. The town's not going to write a check for 18 million dollars. I can tell Tom, I can tell that, you know, where's, he's coming up to ask that. I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be, you know, maintained in the, that district in the Village of Hope. That's where it's got to be carried.
But those folks have to understand that if we're going to put this in, they're required to.
They, they'd have to vote on it. You have to create a, a district and they would take, take a vote on it.
Yeah, because they're going to be required.
Yeah.
To, to connect.
They'll be assessed. Yep, it'll be a lien on their house.
Right.
Yep, 20,000, 20, I mean, 20, 30, 20,000, $30,000 lien on their house.
Yeah, that's going to go over like a lead balloon.
It, it sounds like lots and lots of moving parts.
There really are, which again, you can't do anything until you've got a feasibility study and you know what your options are. And in the meantime, we continue to pay to reserve that space in the West Warwick Sewer um, Treatment Plant. I'm not sure how much it is. From my understanding, it's between 10 and $20,000 a year that we've been paying since 1991. In addition to every time they do upgrades, we have to pay a percentage of the upgrades. We've, we've probably paid out hundreds of thousands of dollars since then.
No, I, I agree. I just don't know where we come up with $90,000 for in today's budget.
I mean, Tim, you throw $90,000, we get a number back that we look at and say, we can't, we can't possibly do this, even, even with, with collaboration from other towns or even from the, from the state.
But.
It's such a, a roll of the dice.
And I, I understand that. Um, you know, over the past couple of years, there's been a lot of infrastructure money out there that may have paid for quite a bit of it. That money's probably going to dry up. But again, the feasibility study is going to provide you not only with that option, but other possible options that would not cost that much.
I will say that the feasibility study will probably come up with a report that you actually need to apply for grants.
Right.
I mean, that is one thing that you get out of it. It's, it's, it's a heavy lift. It, it's a very heavy lift, but.
But how long do you keep kicking the can down the road?
But my, my biggest concern is, is that, um, and I'll say, I've said this before, I'll say it again, and I'll say it going forward in another meeting. Last year's budget, this year's budget was terrible toll on the Budget Committee. And 4% was not where we wanted to be. And we were scraping around for $5,000 and $10,000. Now, where did we come up with $87,000? And that's, that's the concern I have.
Well, unfortunately, I had put this request in when we had Aqua money. That money's all gone, so, um.
So, uh, it, it, unrelated question, Cindy, but how do we get out of paying this fee to the West Warwick Sewer Treatment Plant for?
Well, I, I have no idea. I, I mean, we, I, I, we'd have to talk to the attorneys about that, but somehow they'd have to.
The legislation, isn't it?
It's in the legislation. I think we, it's just a determination and we stop paying it and then we lose, we lose that option ever going forward.
Well, we're paying for something.
It's an option. It's what it is.
The, um, the, I think the rationale behind securing that um, capacity in the way, what, what, in the wastewater treatment plant in West Warwick was exactly the kind of thing that Cindy's talking about and we're all talking about, sort of what happens in Hope. Because, you know, we have, there's a lot of water there. There's a lot of pressures on that. Uh, we, we, years ago, 20 years ago, Hope Mill, I hate to say that, those two words together, but, you know, the Hope Mill initially looking at bringing sewers into, into Hope. Uh, we just had the report from the Hope, um, redevelopment, uh, the name escapes me, but the redevelopment, legacy, uh, project. And I, the one thing I got from that report is, you know, the, uh, if you had better infrastructure down there, it would completely change, hopefully for the better, the Village of Hope. But, you know, yeah, the problem is where do you get the money to do this stuff? I, I frankly think that, um, having the capacity in the West Warwick Wastewater Treatment Plant is a good idea insofar as we, we have a significant amount of capacity. As to my recollection, uh, we have a significant amount of capacity, but you're right. Anytime there's an infrastructure upgrade down there, we have to pay our percentage of it. I remember the last 15 years, the Clyde Interceptor located in West Warwick was upgraded. They increased the size of the pipe. We had to pay our proportionate share of that. You know, but, uh, having that capacity does give us options that we don't have now. I, I also recall, just in general, just, just, um, I, curse of knowledge is sometimes, uh, heavy, but, um, you know, 15, 20, maybe 25 years ago, there was a proposal to, uh, put a water district in North Situate and it went to a financial meeting and it was defeated. Had that gone in, you know, I'd probably drink the water at the office. It, it would make all the town hall, you know?
Question for you. When you said that the Legacy Committee said it would transform the Village of Hope, in what way, bring in industry or, or in what?
Yeah, so, so without getting too technical, uh, above my pay grade, if you had, um, sewers available throughout the Village of Hope, um, you could have a lot more development. You could have a main street that had a lot more business capacity. Um, and I'm not, I'm not saying that that is, I mean, that's one way you could go, but, you know, you have folks that may have, uh, cesspools, those are antiquated, um, septic systems cost a lot of money. Uh, you also need room to put them in, but searing the District of Hope would, would offer a lot more development opportunity. Be that mixed use, be that. Potential development. Yeah, obviously, you know, if you build it, they have to come, but, um, you know, right now we have sort of a, we're limited. You know?
And, and I'm, and it, right now, there's, there's the community septic system down there that services somewhere in the neighborhood of 35 to 40 homes. That is also an antiquated system. If, if something should fail there and you've got that many homes that no longer have an operating, operational septic system, what then?
My concern here is the Village of Hope functions today. It, it runs. It's not falling apart. And we're looking to spend $87,000 to potentially find out that there's something that would cost millions and millions of dollars that we're not going to be able to afford.
Let's clarify. First of all, this is an approval to put a new RFP out. It's not the approval to spend this money. So we would have to approve it to put the award out once we get the RFP back. You know? Maybe by then we could come out, you know, somewhere we're going to get a grant to pay for this, we could do something. You know, like that, right? It's going to take time. And ultimately you could spend, it's true, you could spend the $87,000 or the other one like that. And the people in Hope could say, no, I don't want it, just like they did here with the water. That can happen. Like that, but we won't know till we try to do it. We got to at least put the RFP out rather than have a two-hour discussion on this. Do I have a motion to do it?
Uh, move, move, move approval.
Second.
Motion made a second. Anybody else have anything to say?
Oh, is it Tom?
Tom?
Thomas Gallagher in Pine Hill Road. Does anybody have an idea of what it costs to put sewers in a mile? How much? How many millions?
I can tell you, Tom, that, that the preliminary estimate for the district down there, Brown Avenue to include Hope up to Blossom, I think, and out west, it's, uh, out east, it's, uh, I believe it was 17 or 18 million dollars.
The other thing is, we run water, sewers. Is the city of Providence going to pay it when it goes by their property? I don't think so. Also, the water district you spoke about up here was going to be District One. I live in it. It would have went right by my house. And they wanted $36,000 back then to go buy my house. And if I had just put a new septic system in, if I didn't hook in, they were going to put a lien on my house. You know, who the hell is anybody to put a lien on my house when I've worked hard to keep my house up? Right? I have one other question on the whole pond. I noticed that we're repairing the dam down there. Years ago, I came to a council meeting before any of you people except you were here. And I asked, who owns the dam? I was told the Town of Situate doesn't. But we're repairing it. That means we're taking ownership or we're taking responsibility for it. Are we repairing it? The spillways? I thought John said they were.
John was involved helping them out like that. What happened was they were in a a spot where they didn't know what they were going to do with it. When he talked to the owner of, uh, I believe it's Paramount, like that, he was in Florida. Uh, DEM was saying that it was going to take, they would only allow two boards to be replaced. Anything else you wanted to do is going to take a year or two or more to have engineering done, everything else. When he spoke to the owner down there in Florida like that, the guy says, I've had all that done already and it's never, um, doesn't expire. The engineering he had done, the contracts or whatever, permits or whatever it was. So the guy flew up here and the guy oversaw it and the guy paid a lot of it to get it fixed.
Well, back, back to the sewers. I'd love to see sewers and water throughout the town. But there is so much town property that the Town of Providence owns. I don't think they'll give you a nickel towards it. So are we going to bear the cost of all that? I don't want to be the P, the one who has to put liens on people's houses.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just one quick comment, um, responding to Peter's, uh, concerns about development within the village. As Chair of the Hope Legacy Committee, uh, we recognize there are so many moving parts to all of this, but I think the recommendations from that planning team where you, you just cannot not do live with the, the way it is because of, you've got to deal with the issues. And, and the idea is that you would be able to develop if you look at the village in a different way than you look at the rest of the town. And I think we're going to go to the Plan Commission and start talking about planning and zoning and things like that to look at the villages, maybe in a little different way than you look at the rest of the town. Because if you can build smaller structures that are historically, you know, reminiscent of what we've had in Hope and so forth, that it is possible to develop and make more affordable housing as well as retain the character of the village. That's the whole idea and I agree, no easy, no easy solutions, but there's so. And I agree, no easy, no easy solutions, but there's so many different pieces and one relates to the other. And I, I hear you. If you, you don't wanna spend a lot of money if there isn't an opportunity to go further. So I think we can pull it all together and see what we're gonna have costs and look for grants and see if we can look at the bigger picture for the long, longer term. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Pass this pick. Item J, authorization to implement recommendations presented in the Hope Beach Report as follows. I is approval of funding for the Conservation Commission to add ammonia and surfant analysts during the monthly water quality sampling. Conducted under the URI Watershed Watch Program, not to exceed five hundred and fifty dollars. Estimates for this said sampling are attached.
So the reason I put this on the council agenda is because we talked about it at the last town council meeting, but we haven't had, um, a Conservation Commission meeting since then because of the way the meetings are falling. Our meeting isn't until next Tuesday. I'm fairly confident that at that meeting, I will be able to get approval from the Conservation Commission to pay for this with Conservation Commission funds. But if I don't, there's only one more sampling left this year. And I think adding the ammonia and surfactant analysis will start to give us a, a clearer idea of what's going on. Um, we also will need to do it next year as well. So there's six sampling events next year. It's gonna be an additional five hundred and fifty dollars every month. I will know better in the spring where we're at with the Conservation Commission budget. And if we can continue to pay for that out of the Conservation Commission budget.
Ammonia and surfactant analysis tells you what?
Tells us if, if the bacteria contamination that we're finding in the analysis that we're already collecting is coming from septic systems and cesspools, if it's coming from human sources.
Okay, so we had an extensive meeting about this last time we met.
Right.
And, you know, if you made a graph, X, Y, probability of where the problem's coming from versus cost. The, the clear winner was all of the, uh, underperforming septic systems. So I don't wanna use the word illegal, but, uh, cesspools rather than septic systems that are, that are in that area. It was kinda obvious that everything else cost a ton of money to, to do. And the probability of that was really low versus, hey, it's the cesspools. And we can look at how many are actually there and need to be replaced. If you think this is worth, wild, it's five hundred and fifty dollars, it's not a ridiculous amount of money to help you with that, then.
I absolutely do think so because then we can, we can say for sure, a hundred percent, yes, this contamination is coming from cesspools and cess, and or septic systems.
Able to absorb the six thousand dollars a year for this?
That I'm not sure of. So one of the things that we're hoping to do is go to the, um, Patuxet River Authority. Because the sampling that we're doing now through Watershed Watch Program, um, is costing fifteen hundred dollars a year. And they've agreed to pay for half of it. So we're gonna approach them and ask them if they will consider funding some of this as well.
Just a quick question. If the first three months of analysis tell you, yes, it's definitely coming, do you use do a year's worth of sample?
Possibly not. Right. So what I'm thinking is, you know, in the spring, we, this first sampling is in May, May and June. Then we're in a new budget year after that. So, you know, again, we'll see where we're at. We should be able to cover those expenses. And then possibly add a few more in the next budget. If we think we need to, but you're right, we might start to see a trend that tells us, yeah, this is pretty obvious, no reason to continue.
I'll make a motion to approve. Somebody else has a comment?
Yeah.
Sorry, Chuck.
All right, item two, approval, approve the Conservation Commission in Northern Rhode Island Conserva- Conservation District and establishing a public education program to be presented periodically to the residents within the Hope Pond Watershed.
What's the approval?
We're doing all three together.
Second.
We're doing all three together. All right, we read three, all right. Read three, explore the establishment of a water, wastewater management district, including enabling legislation and creating an ordinance regulating cesspools within the Hope Pond Watershed to be replaced within a certain amount of time.
So, you know, item number one would be fine with me, two is fine with me, three, um, I have concerns over in terms of, you know, we, we have already done some spade work, as I'm told, uh, in the building officials' office, uh, identifying the cesspools that need to be replaced. And we'll have to figure out how to pursue that. And, and I think there are ways to get together a, a, a small group, maybe a small committee to explore, you know, funding options for, to encourage people to do it. But I, I'm concerned about creating a district, um, with legislation and, and forcing people to replace their, um, their, their cesspools, at least initially. I, I, I think an initial run at it would be force the people who, uh, are legally required to do it, that didn't do it. And, and encourage other folks to do it. Maybe we can do it with a septic replacement program or upgrade program, thirty thousand won't do it. But, uh, I, I think there's a, a step to take as it relates just to number three. Before we establish a wastewater management district. That's just my opinion.
Tim, do you think that's like three belongs with the motion we made right before this for that RFP? Um, kinda in conjunction with that?
No, no, I don't think so because a lot of those cesspools are gonna be over in Ring Rock and Frosty Valley. And the, and the sewers aren't.
Not the same.
They're not gonna go up that far. I mean, that, that, that'll take a, 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 a big number off the charts. I think they're somewhat separate.
I think we should, um, I, I, I really do, I'm very supportive of the testing to see where we're at with that. If we get so many consecutive months where, yes, if we know it's those cesspools that are the problem, then I think we create this, um, or talk about creating an ordinance and, um, you know, maybe a wastewater management district. But I think we need that. I really think we need that study first.
Yeah, and I, and I think when we do that, Terry, we'd have to talk to other towns that have these districts and find out what's involved with having them. You know, how do, do we have to have, you know, what kind of human resource, uh, you know, that has to be dedicated to it? Um, what, uh, mechanism you, you would bring people through and if you had to take court actions, which you will have to do in this case.
Right, and we do not have a.
Municipal court.
Right.
So that's just, there, there are a lot of things that are wrapped up in that. Um, I, I personally think one and two are, are fine myself.
I think we should table three. That's my.
I would agree with that.
All right, I just wanna weigh in a little bit about this. I spoke to a wise man today that knew a lot about this. And Charleston went into this. And they crawled before they walked, rather than trying to, you know, tell people, you gotta change the cesspool within six months or a year and spend forty-five thousand dollars, something like that. And their end result from what they did and everything like that, worked out very good for them. Everybody was happy.
Charleston has a wastewater man, waste, onsite wastewater manager, a full-time position.
I understand.
That all he does is go out and inspect cesspools and septic systems and, and assist the residents with getting those repaired or replaced as needed.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is they started slow and they worked their way into it.
Yeah.
And in the end, it ended up saving them money, everything like that. I think that's the way we should go.
Charleston also doesn't have a situation like we have at Hope Pond, where.
No, but they, we've only got, we've only got forty or fifty houses involved here, right? They had thousands.
A lot, yeah.
They had thousands and they also had the coast they had to deal with.
Yep.
So they had a lot bigger problem and they got through it really successfully. So. But I think one of the key words here is it says explore the establishment of a wastewater management district. Doesn't say we're gonna establish one, we're gonna pass a law, we're gonna do legislation. It's just looking into it. So, uh, there's no harm in this. It's right there.
It is, but then what, how do you do that? You know what I mean? It's just, it, it's this type of thing that you pass it tonight and it just slides off to the right. Doesn't happen. You know what I mean? It's just.
No, no kidding. Um, I mean, it, it, it just allows you to start talking about it, basically.
And, and, and keep it on the radar.
Yeah.
Cause that's what I'm afraid of, is that it's gonna fall off the radar.
Well, I think that if you do one and two in conjunction with what we've already tasked the building officials' office to do and looking at these homes, it's kinda keeping the whole issue in front of us. Do you know what I mean?
Well, I know that it was mentioned at the last meeting, so I thought I would.
But if we do pass it in conjunction with one and two, they can do one and two and then eventually explore it. And then have to bring it back to us, Tim. Right?
Yeah.
I, I understand the, um, I understand, uh, Tim's concern. But I also think that, you know, one of the things that I think will help everyone involved here is information. And so I, I like, um, I like having the Conservation Commission provide us and frankly, the general public here with information about what is entailed in these processes. They are very complicated. Um, there's a lot of moving pieces. But, um, the more information that can be shared with the public, especially the folks that live down in the affected areas, I think the better. And I, I see no, no reason to not start exploring this now. Um, so, I, but I understand the concerns. I mean, no one wants to, I, I certainly, speaking for myself, I certainly don't wanna force a, a, a septic system on somebody. They're very, very costly and, uh, you know.
Yeah. But it's gotta be rectified too.
Right, well, that's the balance, so.
So we appreciate all your efforts for sure. For non-paid employees, not really, but volunteers, you, your commission does a phenomenal work for this town with no pet. So, thank you for being here and for advocating for all of this. You're welcome. I care about this town. That's the reason why I do what I do.
Okay.
And actually, Richard, before you do, I would also like to kinda throw in this mix. I, I'd like to have Dave come back at some point in the near future, give an update of, of where we stand on the septic systems down there. What's been identified, uh, what, uh, what our, you know, options are in terms of, you know, requiring people to, you know, update their systems and encouraging other people. So may, maybe we get that on the agenda the next month or two and keep that ball rolling forward.
The, we, we can do that, Tim, just to let you know and the rest of the council, um, the staff over in the building, uh, office, uh, did provide me with some information regarding their, their follow-up on the last meeting. And, uh, be happy to share that with the council and the public.
Great.
All right, can I have a motion?
I have a.
I, I agree with you, Mr. President. Charleston did do it and it, it works fine down there. Um, we did hire a, a part-time employee for the building office. Maybe that person can help out going around, looking at the systems and, and not, notifying the people that they need to correct the systems. I don't even think it's a thousand homes down there that.
No, it's, oh no, it's not even close.
Or there's fifty-one.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm saying, Richard, is that we can, I'd like to get an update on what, what we can do to keep that going forward. And it could entail it just what you're talking about. But I thi- I think it's gonna benefit our children in this community. They use Hope Pond, they haven't been able to use Hope Pond in the summertime. So th- th- there's, there's a cost. And I think the benefit outweighs the cost, cause it's not gonna be the cost on the taxpayers. It's gonna be the cost on the homeowners. And, and s- some of those properties may be rental properties down there. And let the landlord keep up their properties. So I, I, I look at that and I, I think you're right. Charleston is the community to look at. And let's model ourselves after them. Thank you.
All right, can I have a motion?
I'll have a, uh, I'll make a motion to approve since item three is basically explore. So motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any other discussion? Brown, no discussion. All in favor? Any against? Pass this pick. Item K, request from the Director of Animal Control and Police Chief to have the town solicitor draft amendments to the Code of Ordinances concerning penalties and fees related to animal control in a town animal control shelter.
Second.
No, motion made in second. Any discussions?
Peter.
So are we, um, are we effective at collecting the fees that we ask for now?
What was that question again?
Are we effective at collecting the fees that we request now?
Yes.
We.
Yes, they're, they're minimal. Yeah, twenty dollars. Some of them are five dollars. Yeah.
So we need them updated.
To, to, to get in line with other communities in the area, I think, uh, it is timing. It's been a long time. I don't remember the last time the fees were raised, but.
Yeah. I mean, I think the fees, I think it's a great idea, but again, we don't have a municipal court. So how do we enforce those fees?
Animal control, I mean, he stays on top of that stuff. Um, he, he's out there, he writes the summonses and he makes sure we, we collect it. They come to the station and they pay it, uh, or mail it in and he gets the fines and they turn them into the town. And we're fortunate that we have a volunteer squad down there that, uh, that are also financially supportive. Um, we've been leaning on them, but, uh, increasing the fines will obviously lessen the burden for, that we need on the volunteers.
So, cause I was standing behind this, I was riding my bicycle, I almost got attacked by a dog. I put up my bicycle between the dog and myself. I went to Chuck, an animal control officer. Uh, I, I stopped at the police station, I, I filed a complaint. The dog was loose, it had no leash, no tags, no nothing. And the fine was twenty bucks. And it just seemed, it wasn't worth sending somebody over there for twenty bucks. And so I requested to have the fees updated and the chief and the staff went through it and find out these things haven't been updated in like twenty, thirty years and they're way out of whack with everybody else.
This would be good, that they should be updated, it's just that we don't have a court, so as long as we're effective.
Uh, under the current, uh, program, we could try people and bring them to district. So they would go on a prosecution in district court as a violation.
Okay. Brown, no other discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? So set. Item L, authorization for the Person State and EMA Director in conjunction with the Town Solicitor to draft and post an RFP for a new color communications tower on North Road, Platte Seven, Lot Twenty-Five.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made in second. Got discussion on it?
So this is the parking lot that we just, the, the lot that we just put in a parking lot for, for the trailhead, for the Trot Perry Preserve. Isn't it? Oh, sorry, I thought it was.
Well, it's in that area, it's like south of that. It's closer to the, um, power line.
So it's the same lot, they're just.
I don't believe, I think it is a divided lot, but it's on the same area of it. It's gonna be to the, to the power line side, unless they changed it. The, the last I heard, that's where it was going, south of the park line.
Right, that, that's, yeah, we saw the original plan and that's where it, and we, we, we put off putting in the parking lot for, what, a year and a half? Until this went through and then nothing seemed to happen. Cause our understanding originally was that Verizon was gonna put a tower up there. Um, and they had actually even submitted a preliminary plan of where the road was gonna come in to go to the tower. Um, and then we just had to move forward with getting the parking lot. And so we just wanna be sure that we're consulted. Because there's a possibility that they will intersect with the parking lot and we just wanna make sure that.
Yeah.
That things remain intact.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, we also are looking at that lot. We're looking at some proposals to bring to the council to put under public trust, so it'll remain as it is forever. And we believe that that could be accommodated in the language of that kind of document. But when we did get the grant and so forth, we were in close contact with Chief Robinson. And we knew that that was a possibility. And, uh, Kirk, I believe that is part of the same lot, but it wouldn't interfere directly. Yeah, it wouldn't interfere with the parking lot itself, so. I think we're okay with it. We just wanna be together and as we go forward and, and know what's happening. Thank you.
All right, if we have that in a motion that addresses their, their concerns at the same time.
I, I'll make a motion that we, we, we pass this, uh, with, uh, I I'll make a motion that we 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 pass this uh with uh the requirement that Chief Robinson keep uh the folks in the Land Trust and Conservation Commission uh involved in the discussions.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any other discussion? I have no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? All set. Item N, M, excuse me, gratification of the expenditure for a new twenty-twenty-three Ford F-five-fifty four-by-four custom-built lifeline, superliner, Type One AD, Class One Emergency Medical Vehicle Rescue for the Hope Jackson Fire Department in the amount of four hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars from Specialty Vehicles, Inc. Funding from the Public Safety Bond approved by the electors at the twenty-twenty-two Financial Town Meeting. This is an upgrade. Uh originally, it was four hundred thousand dollars that was approved, and when the final ending cost, it was four thirty. So we're actually just increasing it thirty thousand from the four hundred thousand.
I'll make a motion to get it to discussion.
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion on it?
Ted, is there room in the bond for this? Okay. All right.
All the documentation I saw said it went out at four twenty-five, was approved, and it, they came in at four thirty. And but I also saw the documentation that said four hundred, so I was a little confused.
It could have been four twenty-five, but I was going four hundred.
I think, I think North Citrus ambulance is four hundred and Hope's was four twenty-five.
Yeah, that's what I thought. No worries either way, I just
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Well, it's actually the expenditures, what is here, four hundred and thirty-two ninety-nine.
Yep.
So to ratify it, because they're gonna build and deliver it.
Yeah, no, I second it.
Motion made in second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, was something changed from the original spec? Cause my understanding is when we signed up with these folks, they gave us a price, the price was locked in. Did we change something?
I'm not aware of it.
Why the price?
Did you ever know that?
I think there's an additional cost, that is what item this work added at one small amounts.
Okay. All right, barring no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? All set, pegged, passes. Item fourteen adjourned meeting, Gary.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned four, eight twenty.